I am going to call the Halifax Elementary School Committee meeting to order on August 29th at 6:00 PM. We had a building tour at 5:00 PM, so every year the school committee walks through the elementary school building with the administrative and building staff just to kind of make sure everything's on the up and up and in good shape, looks great. So if any teachers or whatever administration finds anything moving forward, just come let us know and we'll chat about it. But everything looks like we're ready to go for the start of school. And now we're ready to start our meeting, so we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Would anybody in the audience like to be acknowledged as scheduled to speak at this time? Seeing no one. Oh, we didn't print them at all, did we?
If you go right here.
Do need them.
They're in order, so their minutes are right here. Pull it up for you.
Okay. So for me of us, we all just shift to everything digital, so we didn't have mounds of paper in front of us, and our minutes are now electronic.
What document was that?
This is one, it says Agenda Documents One from 7/1/2000. I bet you that's it right there. Yep. This is our quick little meeting that we had. Thank you, Lauren, can I get a second?
A second.
Okay. All right, thank you, all of those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, we're skipping Section 4 because that's going to get bumped to the next meeting. Next is Completing Reorganization. So, right now, the spots that we have open are for Admin Review, so we need one person for Admin Review and an alternate. We need somebody on Bylaw. We need a PTO liaison and an alternate. We need a Youth and Rec liaison and an alternate. And then a Capital Budget member, but typically with capital budget items, we always discuss it anyway, so. Oh, you shouldn't have a thing, it was just given to me.
It's right here under Agenda Doc 3.
Go to Share With Me, maybe it's there. No, Share With Me. Yeah, okay, Agenda Doc 3. This is going to take a little learning curve, I think.
It's gonna take, it's gonna take a little while to get used to.
Okay, so we need somebody on Admin Review, so basically they meet a few times a year to go over the superintendent's evaluation, and then it's brought before a joint committee to be discussed and voted on and moved forward. So somebody needs to step up for that. Looks like I'm like sitting in all the other subcommittees for the most part. They probably won't meet until, what?
Did you meet last year?
I did it last year.
How long was it?
Um, it was more, uh, it really wasn't a lot of meetings there, say like three or four, and then there's a compilation of the everyone's reviews of superintendent, but someone else from Halifax. I mean, I happen to be the second pair of eyes for it, so I did a little more cutting lifting, but I would say it's, um, I mean, it's helpful, and it's, you know, that's why I was saying Karen, because it's very similar to the other way, you know, like, you know, I wouldn't say it's like writing IEPs, but there's like, you know, exceeds expectations, meets expectations, like there's way anyone else supposed to fill out their reviews, so all supposed to fill this case. But it's more, this, the committee needs to compile the results and go over it and make sure the comments are transferable that are made by school committee members, so, um, and if I remember correctly, like I said, it was like two meetings, I believe, and they were all virtual, so, I mean, I can do it again, if I just didn't want it to give other people the chance, if they were pressured.
Would you, would you rather do it again, would you be the primary? Is that how that works?
Yes, there's a primary and an alternate.
Right.
It's okay.
I could happen to do PTO and/or Youth and Rec.
Okay.
I'll stay on the Youth and Rec as the primary.
Do you want to do, you want to be the primary for PTO and you be the primary for Youth and Rec, and then you can be the...
Sure.
Who wants to be the PTO alternate? I'm assuming he probably don't want that. Do either of you want to be the PTO alternate?
What's it to do? I'm not saying I'm. I will be the alternate.
Okay, Bylaw, I don't think I've ever met in the eight years I've served on this committee. I mean, I'll stay there.
It's inside them here.
Huh?
That's inside them here.
Yeah. All right, I'll just stay there, I suppose. All right, and then the other subcommittee that I was interested in adding to our committee was involving curriculum development, just staying on top of the changes that are happening in the curriculum, things that are coming down from DESI changes in the SEL curriculum, just keeping eyes on what's happening in our classrooms. And I know we get a review from the administration every meeting, but personally, I would like to take a deeper dive into the changes that are coming down from state. Yeah, so you're the only one that reached out to me about being involved in any of the, like having a vested interest in any of the subcommittees. But in order to develop the subcommittee, we have to take a vote for it to exist, so I guess I'll make a motion for my own subcommittee.
I'll second your motion.
Well, can I make it first?
I thought you were just doing it, though.
What sort of authority does this subcommittee have over...
I don't think it's a matter of authority, it's just a matter of detail and exploring and more eyes, and so as a school committee, we have, as a whole body, we have authority in terms of having, you know, conversate, obviously, we're guided by DESI, so we're bound by guidelines, but we also play a role as part of our duties in understanding what curriculum's in the building, what direction it's taking when they pilot different programs, you know, yeah, we trust our teachers are making the right decision, that they're going to pick a curriculum that's within the frameworks and is a good fit for their subject, but we do have the ability to put input in that arena.
Melissa Farrell would be involved in it, because I feel like because she's the curriculum director for this age group, that she is highly trained and would be a good person to include in that, because, I mean, I don't personally have education credentials, especially in curriculum, so I would not suppose to have like the expertise to make comments, I mean, on certain things about curriculum.
Well, I think she'd be a good, a good resource for members of the subcommittee to use and invite to participate. I don't, I don't think it's something that we wouldn't be able to start digging through material without her, you know? And like I've already requested a bunch of material from Ryan, who has sent it back to me like very willingly, I just haven't had the time to dig through it, and it's a lot of information for one person to handle.
Just so I understand, Melissa, you're asking would be on the subcommittee?
I just feel like you should have some input from someone that has...
No, and I agree, I understand. Mike, what I don't understand is for a subcommittee that someone's asking to form, would be, the members of the subcommittee would be on the school committee?
Correct.
Correct, but I'm trying to sort of understand what our roles as school committee would be than saying much about the curriculum, since it does come down from DESI, and would you like then go to teachers and say, "I'm not comfortable in teaching this," or what sort of, like what's...
What would be the...
Wait, what?
I mean, I don't know, like what...
I want to know what my kids learn. Bottom line, that's it. So I want to see it in black and white. We don't get papers home from school anymore, everything's electronic. If there are changes coming down the pike, I want, I think it's our responsibility as a committee to make the public aware of what is happening in our building in terms of the curriculum.
But my sort of thought is it should come from Melissa Farrell, not the school committee, because what if something is misinterpreted by a committee because we don't have the training in curriculum?
Why wouldn't we ask her to be part of the conversation?
I'm not saying we wouldn't, that's why we're having this conversation, because I want to make sure the information presented, because if the school committee all of a sudden is like letting everybody know about curriculum at schools, or completely becoming from our admin team, that's...
I, I think, can I interrupt you for just a second? I think that you, we're probably agreeing here, I think what you are asking is formally, where would she fit in, right? Not being part of the committee, but where would she fit in as far as distribution?
No, I just more think that that information's available to anyone who wants it, I don't know that our school committee needs to form a committee to also share that information, because like you said, you asked Ryan, who sent it to you, if other parents are interested, it just seems a little redundant, honestly.
Are you looking for more than what Melissa Farrell Kane shared at the parent square, the curriculum that was shared with all parents?
What are you talking about?
An email was sent out that curriculum resources, showed up information about the curriculum that was sent.
You're talking about, before that, I think what she's talking about...
No, this is something I've been thinking about for a long time.
So I'm just saying, you were, you said that you want to be aware of what your children are learning, and I was saying that I believe that Mr. Bowdre helped you with that by sending out the Subtle Divisional District Curriculum Resources email. Is there something more you're looking for than that?
I dived the comb through that first.
So what would be the goals and responsibilities of the subcommittee? I guess that's what I'm confused about. What would, what would a meeting of the subcommittee look like? What would be the goals and objectives?
Basically, the way that I look at it is this curriculum is changing rapidly, okay? There's a lot that comes down the pike, and a lot of the time, what's presented on its face to us is very surface, as opposed to what's actually being implemented and happening. So for me, as a parent, I would want to dive a lot deeper into, you know, okay, we're, like we're changing the SEL curriculum, what does that entail? I don't just want to know, okay, we're bringing new, great changes to our SEL curriculum, that's not good enough for me.
Okay, do you have an example of some, the way you saw something on the surface and what was implemented?
Yes, we're changing the SEL curriculum, and I want to know what it is, what's in it specifically, so when they send out an message to parents and it says that this is what we're doing, like I want to know exactly what it is of what we're doing.
But what does the, what does your subcommittee do? Like what would the, the point of the subcommittee do? Just what are the goals and objectives of the subcommittee? It's all a parent to oversee it?
Yeah.
Question it?
Yeah.
Just to kind of not, not to...
Not to just rubber stamp everything.
...not to happen, or just like a, it's not like to try and change the curriculum, it's more just throw all these questions and stuff, it's just what it is.
So why doesn't actually be a school committee responsible?
Whose responsibility is it? It's ours.
Every parent.
But every parent is not sitting at this meeting.
I know, but that's their problem, like I feel like we're...
That's why they voted us in, I think, to talk about these things and to make these decisions, so.
But as a new parent, like I have three that's coming out for here, and I just have my first one, and two are, and it's like a whole bunch of information that you're watching, and I'm sure you're like, "What's happening?" And then for it to all be on the parent square too, or then like missing the text messages and emails, and like, it's a lot of, I think, that could be where...
Yeah, I definitely...
You know, just to have somebody oversee it for you, that, like, for people that send, they trust us to do it, so I think that would be hurt.
Yeah, that's not so, but again, I was still not clear. So the goal of the subcommittee would be to review the curriculum that's in place?
Proposed.
And then communicate it to...
To the committee, and to parent, and to the public.
If I may, we do have policies related to curriculum, so we would want to make sure that whatever the objectives of the committee do not violate the policies that are already in place and the authority of the educators and the state of Massachusetts in terms of the Massachusetts state frameworks.
I think, I think this is getting a little like more, yeah. This is, I'm not trying to change any kind of curriculum, I'm just saying, much like we talked to Mr. Steele every school committee meeting and get an update on what Youth and Rec is doing, yeah, Youth and Rec blasts that we're having an Easter egg hunt, but all the little nitty gritty, nitty gritty details are not necessarily discussed publicly, so like those are, like, it's the same, just like every, every other subcommittee that we have, PTO, I'm not trying to go in and uproot the PTO and change all of their bylaws.
So the goal would be to research and educate report at these meetings?
Yes.
That's great. So how many members would be, would you anticipate?
I would say two, just like, like the rest of them.
I would like to request that as many up to five, that if all of us wanted to serve on it, that we could.
Then we might as well, then, no, that's not the point of the subcommittee, the point of the subcommittee is to bring it back to the school committee, and then at that point it can be discussed, much like everything else.
But I just think it would be fair, since as you said, curriculum is so important and it's such an important job for us.
Right, just like budget is brought back to the entire committee, just like warrants are brought back to the entire, just like Admin Review has one member on it, and we're talking about evaluating our superintendent, who's the most critical member of our educational community. The whole committee doesn't sit on that, it gets brought back to the committee for discussion.
In essence, we are all part of that, because the subcommittee is bringing it back, so all five don't need to be on that committee, the subcommittee.
Why can't we include, like, to...
Why can't we have, sure, why can't we have five people on every committee? Let's change it, let's change all these subcommittees, just put all five of our names on there, problem solved, move on to the next.
I think that might be a scheduling nightmare.
That's what I said.
Yeah, but that, but...
I think we should move the motion and take a vote, because now we're just talking in circles.
Well, there's some questions that need to be answered.
I still don't...
Yeah, there's some questions that I think that still need to be answered, so in all fairness, maybe we take a vote on what, the committee, forming the committee?
Yeah.
I just would like to know, you do just, like, for the record, say exactly what the goal of the committee is, right? What the responsibility is?
I did that already.
Could you say it again for me? I appreciate it.
The purpose is to examine and digest the curriculum and the changes that are ever flowing through it.
Well, what if like on my own, say I'm not on the committee, I go through the curriculum and my perception of what it is is different than what the subcommittee comes back to it?
That's what this meeting's for.
Right, that's why everything gets brought back to the school committee.
So that was the goal, but also to your point of us being voted and represent people, we also select Jill, and she selects people who select the curriculum, which, I mean, it comes from DESI, you know?
And then, yeah, but DESI provides, and the state provides frameworks. They don't, they don't say, "This is the exact lesson plan that you must implement today."
No, I understand the frameworks, and also that our schools are from the destination, and it's proven, it's fact, our schools are from the destination, and I guess my biggest concern is, I mean, she is in education, but where do we have curriculum degrees, do we use the curriculum?
I agree with you, I don't know.
But I also think that, not I think, I know that in a lot of cases, to your point, like things can be interpreted differently, right? So when you have outside influences that are skewing the direction of where things go in the school district, it can be troublesome for a lot of parents who are looking up from the outside going, "Why the heck are they talking about that in a classroom that has nothing to do with academics? Or why are they not having a good academic culture?" Right, because...
But against that point, we're not experts, that's not what works.
You don't need to be an expert for that.
Did you give us an example?
Yes, please.
Are you serious? You guys not paying attention to what's happening in this nation right now, and the overhaul of like every...
You're talking in a meeting about saying what teachers are doing in the classroom, and I would just like...
The whole point of the committee is to figure that out, that's the whole point of the committee.
But you're saying, you're stating that it's already happening, and I just wanted...
It's happening across the entire country.
I'm not talking about, can't you talk about Halifax Elementary?
Yeah, and Silver Lake, and, like, all right, it's a perfect example, is I had several concerned parents reach out to me last year and tell me that their child was told to write an essay about Christopher Columbus.
Yes.
And why we should not be, why we should be canceling Columbus Day. That was a concern for me.
That was the writing prompt, cancel Columbus Day?
So that was the concern that was brought to me by parents, so in order for me to dive into that, talk to the principal, talk to the curriculum coordinator, talk to the teachers, figure out what's going on, if, if we have something set in place where parents can go, or, so I'm not being bombarded by parents on a weekly basis about, "You're not going to believe what my teachers, my kid's teacher said today," it would be better, in my opinion, if parents could come to the school committee and be like, "Listen, this is what's going on in Mrs. X's classroom, what the heck?"
Okay, good.
So then that's the responsibility.
So you do it, and then what happens?
It gets addressed.
How does it get addressed?
In the subcommittee, and then gets, and then gets resolved, and gets reported back to the school committee.
But my point is, like, so say like at the middle school, right, someone has an issue with a book that's being taught, right?
Yeah.
There is a whole process for, and I don't feel like we have a process in place for if there is a problem with something, you know, to have a committee with knowledge of curriculum, and knowledge of what's being taught and how, and so I would like to have a whole process in place to address concerns like that, where, like the committee at the high school or the middle school, where you have teachers, the superintendent, you have parents, you have...
That wasn't a committee, that was, that was like a working group. It's not a standing committee.
Well, I don't know, maybe you need to kind of build up that process?
Yes.
Well, if, I just, but that's a process in place, I don't know, is that a process in place already?
We do have a reconsideration materials policy, which led to the creation of a, of a variety of individuals who served, including members of the school committee, I believe Ryan was the chair of that committee, to, to examine the materials and to discuss the potential reconsideration of the, of the book. So we do, we do have a process, we do have a, a policy in place for reconsideration materials.
But how do you have, like assignments, for instance, if a parent has, I mean, if a parent has...
Generally, speaking, your first, your first thing would be to go and speak with the teacher to, to find out the context, to, to discuss what was taught and how it was taught from the teacher's perspective, and then if you were dissatisfied with that conversation, you would then move to Principal Bowdre. And again, Principal Bowdre may, depending upon the, the topic, may ask someone like Melissa Farrell to also participate in that, that meeting as a curriculum expert on that subject, and then if we're still dissatisfied, it could be moved to Assistant Superintendent Lynch, and there is the, the policy for reconsideration, but the way that a teacher teaches or a teacher's lesson plan, concerns of the classroom, typically, we would recommend that you first start by speaking with the classroom teacher.
Because I didn't receive any complaints last year.
Right, I know, but you and I are very, very, very different, and fall on very different ends of the spectrum, so people feel comfortable coming to me and saying things to me that they may not feel comfortable coming to you and saying, and may not feel comfortable going to the teacher or administration about it either. So when I'm bombarded constantly about things that are happening in this building and at Silver Lake, because people feel like I'm their only outlet, and I'm their only voice...
How many people reach out here?
A lot.
How many?
Lauren, I didn't sit there and count them.
You know, I think...
But that's not the point. It's not the point. Why is transparency a problem? It sounds like it is.
If I could interrupt, I could be, only because I think we're getting lost here a little bit, because the topic was forming a committee, which you brought up, and I understand your questions and agree with some of them. I think, let's not start badgering back and forth with, with things that may not be directly involved with the question of a committee being formed, because some of the questions, in my opinion, that some people are asking here, might be directed towards that committee, okay? So maybe we could possibly bring it back to the question at hand, which is the committee.
I would, I want to make sure I understand the committee, so the goal is to examine and digest the curriculum and changes that are ever flowing.
What curriculum, so you're, you're telling, proposed?
All of it, what's in the building right now?
Okay.
So this email that Professor Bowdre sent out, all of that curriculum...
I have not seen the email.
Do you want to check the email?
No, I'm not going to sit here in a meeting and read an email. I'm going to sit here and have a discussion about the fact that, this is what I'm putting on the table, my motion is to form a subcommittee involving a curriculum subcommittee, that includes SEL and academic curriculum at Halifax Elementary School.
And what were the responsibilities of the committee?
That's my motion.
I can't ask a question in front of the committee?
Not until I have a second and it's on the floor.
Second for the motion for the committee?
To form a curriculum subcommittee.
All right, I'll second...
Here at Halifax Elementary School.
I'll second the motion for the vote to form the committee.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second on the table. I would assume, like every other, including negotiations, we're in a negotiating, negotiating meeting today, the first meeting that we have is setting ground rules, so when you develop a new subcommittee, I would assume that step one would be to develop some sort of outline, ground rules, what is this committee going to look like, what are the responsibilities of this committee, how are we going to do, I mean, I didn't see you guys screaming and asking all these questions when you wanted to have a DEI subcommittee.
Am I screaming at you?
Whatever, you know what I mean.
I'm just, I'm sorry, I feel like I am, but I'm not trying to give them that, I know.
Okay, but, but, okay, we're bringing it back.
So we're back to discussing, you got your second, so can I ask now what would be the responsibilities of the subcommittee?
I already answered that question, and I just told you that upon the formation of the committee, the first step would be establishing those boundaries and guidelines.
So who decides those, to keep on the subcommittee?
I would assume so.
I would think that we would, if it's a school committee committee, I would think...
Why, we don't...
Talk about with the committee.
And then everything is brought back, just like we do in negotiations, this is how subcommittees work, they have meetings, and then the, then everything is brought back to the subcommittee.
You're asking me to create something brand new that's never existed before?
Correct.
And to vote on it, I would like to understand what it is I'm voting on. That's all I'm asking for, is I just...
It's a subcommittee about the curriculum in the building.
I've got that, but what would the responsibilities be? They would just read the curriculum and report back, and that's it? Is that the end of it?
Sure.
And just put it on record, that's what it would be? So they will...
And then they possibly, for now...
Address any concerns.
Right now, that's what, from my understanding, her question and yours, just one moment, if you don't mind, I apologize, so she just asked a question, what responsibility, you said what the responsibility would be right now, and that could be open later to add more responsibilities, if that question's been answered, what else do we need to do now to move on?
We need to take a vote.
Now, the second question, what would be the concerns like?
Bringing it back to the committee and saying, "I've come across this, X, Y, and Z, here are my concerns, X, Y, and Z," we have a conversation about it publicly, so parents know what's going on in this building.
Do you think it's for parents to vote, to, to come up this day, like, topic? When you go back to, like, what was your endgame with this one? It could have been the opposite, maybe she's expecting you to go, "I don't think it should be," or, I mean, it's just like, you still don't...
Yeah, so it was not a assignment in particular, it was a theme essay, so it was...
Right, so I think that it's, yeah, I don't think she's trying to attack what's there now, but I think it's just to like educate the parents, us, what's happening, not, not to go in and tear it apart, but it's just like a course.
I have a lot of concern with what's happening in our schools right now, and I'll tell you something right now, in neighboring communities, they are much further down this hole than we are, and I would like to prevent Halifax from going down that hole. I had a mom in Pembroke call me in tears, because her sixth grader, don't smile at me like that, her sixth grader had to write an essay about abortion, that is disgusting, in my opinion, and I want to make sure that that does not happen at Halifax Elementary School. So there's a perfect example right there.
But that's, I also feel like the reservation is a concern.
That's not a concern for you?
That's not what I said, I said, the reservation of things and how they get handled, there's a process, so I feel like...
Right, but if parents don't know that, how can they even do anything about it? Everything's electronic.
But you know, you're for parents' choice, right?
Absolutely, I'm for transparency.
I am too, but what is stopping parents from talking to their teachers about the concern? Like this is sort of a problem in our society, right? We jump to conclusions, we go to the first, we know it's going to help us, and then instead of having a conversation at the level where it should happen with the teacher...
Right, so our job would be to guide that person.
So is we can tell them...
Exactly.
...how to go to a teacher, though?
I've never had a phone lawyer.
You haven't, Lauren?
You must have had a different...
You're not everyone else.
I know I'm not everyone else, but I would like to facilitate the conversations.
Can I go back to your statement? What do you mean by we're going into a, digging a deep hole?
Karen, I'm not going to sit here and do this nitpicking with you. We need to move the question, we need to move the question.
So...
Just move the question, okay.
We'll, we'll move the question, we'll take the vote. Is that what you're looking?
Yeah, cause we're just, we're just doing this now.
Okay.
It's, there's a motion and a second already on the table. So all of the favor of forming a curriculum subcommittee?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Abstaining. Okay, thank you. Okay, Jessica, you and I are gonna be on the subcommittee.
Don't worry about that.
Nope, I have a right as the chair to appoint two people to the subcommittee.
Is there an alternate?
Sure. Would someone like to be the alternate?
I'd like to be the alternate, thank you.
Okay, so we need to accept a first read and waive the actual reading of some policies that we didn't get to during our August, or our July meeting.
Is that different from this?
That's, that's the reorganization chart.
Right, so where, where, where are you moving them?
On the agenda, going to.
I bet, alright.
I don't know where it is in these fancy pants straps. Um, Brian, do you wanna speak briefly to the policies that we didn't get to at our last meeting? I think the last ones, we did an actual, uh, approval because they had to be in place before the start of the school year, so these were just some housekeeping ones that were left behind. Do you mind updating the committee on what they entail?
Sure, the first policy in your package is the EDF wellness policy. There are a few updates in that policy that were worked on by the wellness subcommittee, which were required to have in place by departmental elementary and secondary education. We have a three-year review of our wellness policy, as stipulated by DESI, so, uh, there's some safeguards in there on student information privacy, like freedom to use lunch. There's reference to required training for district staff related to food services, um, and the offering of freedom to use lunch, which happens this time of year. Uh, there's some more information that food shouldn't be used as an incentive for students, and that physical activity should not be withheld as punishment for students, which are all in line with like federal guidance and regulation. And our wellness policy improvements were reviewed by, uh, both legal counsel and our DESI wellness coach, who is, uh, Kristin Harrison, uh, we worked on that last year. We continue our work with, um, our DESI coach, but those were some of the improvements made, and I'm happy to answer any other ones about the wellness policy that's inside of that.
Physical activity should not be used as discipline is in a policy?
No, food, food should not be used, oh, physical.
Physical activity should not be used.
Physical activity should not be limited as a, as a.
It's not recommended, there's a.
Wait for, for that kind of thing.
I, I, I get confused, I can't listen, I apologize, it's my fault, it's my fault, Lauren, I apologize. What was the answer, that physical activity cannot be used as discipline, did I hear that right? I apologize.
Yes, so it's.
I don't have it on my computer, or at least I can't find the policy right now.
No problem, so, inside the policy, sorry. Uh, there's a section of the, the wellness policy that, that says, under physical education, physical activity, physical activity will not be used as a punishment, and physical activity will not be withheld as punishment. Withholding recess should not be a disciplinary consequence unless there's a safety-related reason. So there's a lot of research coming out of educational circles that says, like, children then need to move and, uh, exert physical energy, they're having a hard time in the classroom. It's not recommended that making the student sort of like miss recess would be a, a good technique to, to use, to use that student to help them improve their behavior. So I think that's what is, is, uh, the reference, and then beneath that says, additional time for physical activity may be used as a reward, and that's for the goal of having every student develop the knowledge and skills they need, so that's a little bit about.
Thank you. Mr. Bowdr, do we follow that policy here strictly, or?
We, we make sure that we let students know that it shouldn't be recessed.
I didn't, we what?
That we don't take recess away.
We don't take, we recess away. Excellent, thank you.
Effort and disciplinary, and training out there.
Well, disciplinary would include anything, discipline, punishment, discipline, well, you didn't, you didn't read this last night, you didn't do this, so you're gonna stay in and do it during recess. We don't do that. Excellent, thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other additional questions about the updates to the wellness policy? It also includes our, uh, we completed with our wellness coach, um, the WELLSAT 3.0, which is the evaluation tool that's used for the wellness policy, and that lines up with the requirements for DESI, uh, and so they signed off on our policy and gave us some pretty good feedback, and we're excited to work on implementation this year to make sure we're doing everything to keep our students healthy and, and well. There's a lot of food services components to this as well, um, so when, if you read through it again, you can see some of the USDA on some of the. Did you say, I appreciate Megan Aaron, who has worked with this as well, our food services director, she's on the wellness committee, our nurse leader, our PD teachers, Mr. Ruiz, he was very helpful on it, so, threw a lot of eyes on it.
Do we have to do this, or am I just?
We can do them all at the end, together.
The next po, next policy? The next policy is filed, DHE, which is, the proposed policy is about the use of electronic messages by members. When you read the policy, I think the most important points are, uh, for a school committee to comply with the meeting law, uh, people are, school committee members are prohibited, prohibited from deliberating outside of meetings, so the policy, uh, stipulates that all electronic correspondence between and among members of the school committee should copy the executive secretary of the Halifax School Committee, which is Karen Tringali. So when there is, um, it's okay when there's communication, as the policy says, that's for housekeeping purposes, such as requesting or communicating agenda items, meeting times and dates, but this is a quote, electronic messaging should not be used to discuss committee matters that require public discussion under the hope of meeting law. So if there's any correspondence that's similar to that, there's, the executive secretary, Karen Tringali, should be copied on that communication.
If I may, the only change to this policy is just changing Lisa Turkot to Karen Tringali.
Okay.
It's not a new policy.
Okay.
Thank you. The next policy is IHBG, which is a homeschooling policy, and, uh, the only change to that, I don't know if your changes are in, in red, but it's the second bullet point that says, for the convenience of the parent, the district has a form that parents can feel free to utilize. Previously, the language read that the parents had to use the district homeschooling form, they are not required to use it, they're certainly free to use it, but this change just reflects that a parent could opt to homeschool their child and submit it in a format that's not the form we use, but does still comply, uh, with the policy proposals, which are enumerated beneath, that's the curriculum, who's teaching the students, the instructional materials, uh, but that was just a, a, a small change in the policy to reflect that parents have the option, but were not required to use this reform. The next update, uh, is to policy IJNDV, IJNDVR, which is our policy with tech regulations to accompany the empowered digital use policy. The only change to this policy is in red, and after conferring, uh, with Mr. Pello and district council, his proposed change to the policy, update to it, would be to state that it's against school policy for students or employees to run their mobile device as a hotspot during school hours, as it generates interference to the school's wifi, and the use of a device to block or interfere with the school wifi would be considered a violation of federal law and the policy. So, uh, what Mr. Pello is, in the tech department's trying to get at is, they, they don't want students going around the school network and accessing the internet by creating a hotspot on their phone, such as students and staff here as well. So, his addition to the tech policy would be that writing in red, um, on your copy of the policy.
The same safeties that are on the computers, I mean, cause obviously people use the phone books on their home, like, have the same safeties, right? Even if they were to use their phone as a hotspot, like, it doesn't circumvent any of the safeties we have on the computer versus, right?
I can confirm that with Mr. Pello, but my understanding is that still there's a filter on all of the district-owned devices. I think there's more, um, a little more monitoring capacity, so for example, we use something called, like, LAN school in school, where, you know, teachers can make sure that when students are in a class, that they're all on top of the lesson and doing the appropriate materials. I don't think that that is not available off the school network, so there are some things that are, um, I'd say, a little bit different on, on the school network, but still there are protections in place. I don't, I don't think any of those, this proposal, they're trying to eliminate that and also the interference with the school.
No, it totally makes sense, I was just wondering.
Yeah, I can follow up with Mr. Pello to get some more specific details.
Am I, am I asking the same question that Lauren just asked? Is, I don't understand technology very well. The hotspot, can that not be disabled when you're in the building? That you can't use your phone as a hotspot?
Um, my, I'm not a tech expert.
I don't.
Yeah, but you can, so if right now I elected not to connect to the Halifax network like I am, I could connect my device to my, to a cell phone if I, I chose to.
Do you ask that question?
So.
Is that what you were talking about? Can you, can it be disabled, once you're in the building, or no?
I don't think so, the, the middle phone has the ability to become a hotspot.
I, right.
So I don't think the building could disable that capability, because it's with your cell phone company, not the building.
Cause I, I understand on multiple levels why we don't want that happening in the school. Um, okay, alright.
But I, but I can ask to make, to ask, what's, to clarify, what's the difference between the safeties in place on the school network and maybe off the school network?
I mean, I think it's probably, yeah, you know, you, I mean, obviously, I know the students at home, but, um.
Bless you.
The other question, um, can a teacher tell if a student's in a hotspot if the LAN isn't available? Like, it's, do they know? Cause I mean, I sort of wonder, like, how would this be enforced? Teacher can check it, if you go, like, if you go on their phone and look for wifi, pop up, like, the, the line, and tell them that this is on, like, that's, that isn't a hotspot, but, um, so it's, so if they, I mean, if they check it, they would have to go on and check it, or else it's not.
Do teachers use anything like Google Guardian to view students' screens while they're on the books? Do you know? Do you tap? No?
The only one I'm aware of is the, for the LAN school one that's used in school, uh, I'm not sure of, I know that we, there are filters, there's also a safety filter to make sure that students are searching for in school, like, appropriate topics, and some, you know, topics are flagged for student safety, uh, but since this is the first reason, reading, I'm happy to follow up with Mr. Pello about enforcement, like, would teachers know, and, uh, what other safeguards are in place for students on the district-owned devices?
Can I ask you to vote on that question, Karen? What is the cell phone, official cell phone policy, how do you know?
Ask the, uh, in their access.
What happens if it's not?
And they, if they are seen with a, like, a call.
Cool.
I mean, it takes, it's pretty good, uh, I know, it's, it's very rare that they have to use that phone, probably, but, and then, um, in terms of searching, um, almost, they have to log in with their student account, so like, you can't, they can't even search anything unless they're in their school account, cause that always bugged them out. I don't think here we've had any issues with laptops that I'm aware of.
Cause they're smart.
Yes, they are.
Is that all?
The finalized policy, CDI, Evaluation Superintendent. Uh, the improvement to this policy, as Summer explained earlier, admin review completes the Evaluation Superintendent. This addition to the policy would add in a mid-year, uh, formative update to admin review, which would be by, uh, February fifteen, fifteen, uh, and then progress report to the Joint Committee of Union Thirty-One, so related by April fifteenth, so the two updates are the addition of the formative and the April fifteenth, uh, due date of the final, uh, evaluation. I'm sorry, it's not clear, it says that the progress reports due by April fifteenth, then it goes on to say that individual school committee members must have their evaluations completed by May first, so I'm not sure if those two pieces are in conflict, and they would probably be updated.
I think the May first is due for the June first evaluation. I think that's what, again, I wasn't, um, part of the crafting of this policy, but my understanding is that the May first refers to the summative, or the consensus evaluation that's due on June first, so in order for the team to pull that together, they need everyone's responses by May first. Does that make sense?
I think it's the progress report that comes out on the fifteenth, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. That's the final proposal of, uh, changes to the policies that were in the agenda and are being reviewed at, uh, each of the school committee meetings this, this year.
So typically, I think I briefly explained this in our last meeting, but it was quick and virtual. Um, what happens is the policy subcommittee meets, goes over the policies, brings it to the school committees, we do our first read, we waive the actual reading, so we don't have to read aloud every single policy, verbatim, um, you guys all have a copy of it, have a copy of the changes, if you have any concerns regarding the information that came out of the subcommittee, you let the members of the subcommittee know, they bring it back to the policy subcommittee within the district, we make any changes that need to be done, or we don't, and come back to the school committee for a final vote, and then it gets updated in the handbook. So that's how it works.
Who needs on the policy committee and this other?
Myself and you, Jess, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so between now, do we have a policy meeting set?
We don't have a policy meeting set.
Okay. Um, so I guess between now and our next school committee meeting, right? Cause we only meet again in policy of other, if there are concerns about the policy.
Right, so in, in theory, um, if all of the school committees vote to approve these policies in the second read, then they become official Silver Lake Union Thirty-One policies.
Right, so this is the first read for these policies, so any concerns you may have between now and the next school committee meeting, um, email myself, Jessica, CC, Karen, and we can bring it to, you know, the proper subcommittee if, if there are concerns. If we don't hear from you, then we just keep moving forward. So with that, I need a motion to, um, waive the actual reading and accept as a first reading, and you have to say out all the letters.
Um, well, just one quick question, if I can just say it right now. Can you find out about the CDI evaluation, the actual, where first stipulation is, what the expectation is that this, that, um, but I will make a motion to pass the first, um, read of the policies, EDF, BHB, IHBG, IJNDV, dash, R, and CDI.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Awesome. Do you have warrants, Christine?
Do you run the?
No, there are no warrants, because we try to keep on that schedule of the first Monday of every month. So we try to keep on that schedule, cause we have menus that we can commit to that schedule, so you know, that's, especially utilities.
Mm-hmm.
So that's become, we, we try to stick to that schedule. But I do have a report on some single signature warrants on August first, I believe, we had five warrants totaling eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and one dollars and ninety-one cents. They were lost at the town hall, and Jessica Page, thank you very much. And Jessica Page, thank you very much, went to the town hall and signed the warrants for us. Thank you. They will be, next week we'll have warrants available. We'll send you an email. Thank you very much. But once we're back in our normal meeting schedule, I'll be bringing them. They'll be delightful.
Okay.
We'll get to see them.
It's so fun. Alright, School Committee Correspondence and Reports. I don't have anything new business. I don't have anything. Does anybody else? Unfinished business? I don't think we have anything, to the best of my knowledge. That's not listed somewhere else. Future Agenda Items, so, um, that's there. So, if any of you have any requests and want something to be put on the agenda in the future, you can either voice it now or send me an email in between now and our next school committee meeting. You're about to say something?
Yeah, well, I can email you, but I'm going to move the, um.
I can hardly.
My district, no, good. You can skip that. You moved on. They just will leave it on.
Um, no, you're right, though. So, we should put the School Resource Officer MOA on our future.
Safety, safety officer.
Okay, yeah. Future Agenda Item. Guess that sounds like that's going to be part of our discussion.
For?
When we get to it.
Yes.
Um, Subcommittees. Policy, well, we met and went over that, but we talked about that at our last meeting, but that was the second half of what was discussed. Uh, Negotiations. We are, we have an executive session after the meeting tonight regarding custodial negotiations. So, we'll give the committee an update on that at the end of the meeting. Pack? Who's pack?
I don't know.
That's you.
No meeting? No meeting, no.
Okay. Uh, Youth and Rec. We, yeah. Nothing until next meeting. PTO, I'm assuming, does anybody know when the next PTO meeting is? Are you going to talk about that, Kane? In your report?
Five weeks. The Wednesday, Wednesday, Friday, Friday, Saturday. We don't have a date, so.
Okay. Right.
But I, I imagine it will be fourteenth, I guess.
Okay.
But I'll confirm.
Um, can you just make sure that you let Karen know because she's the PTO liaison? Thank you. Capital Budget did not meet, Admin Review did not meet, Union Thirty-One did not meet. And now you're up, Mr. Bowdring. Now that you shuffled everything around.
Uh, Mr. DeSantis is not here tonight?
He's not.
No.
Uh, and he's been taking on some of the PTO and it goes, I don't think that way. Last year, maybe. One here?
Which he usually is. I didn't notice he was. I didn't know. Okay.
Um, so we, let's see, our enrollment is at five seventy-four right now. We're so good. People are still coming in the door, enrolling students. As for students, that's difficult, you know, with the summer time. You know, it's, they're still coming in or they're still coming to us, so. And then when kindergarten registration comes in, sometimes you get, that number goes up a little bit higher. Right now, it's, it's our time. Uh, a bunch of new staff here. At Elementary, we have Julia Bonallum, who's a special ed teacher. And Alan Partis, another special ed teacher. Asia Alseya is a long-term support for the Justice Counselor. Our Justice Counselor is, is on maternity leave until December. She's expecting, I think.
That's exciting.
So, in a long-term sub situation in a Justice Counselor, there's some type of exceptional skill set for him? Does it count as different than a teacher? Is that accounted for in the long-term support?
We put it out there. We started interviews at the end of last year. And I found something like that. It's tough to find like a path better, but, um, we're excited about the person that's coming on board. She's already met with Mrs. DeAndrea. They connected and they've, I don't know. We're excited about it. Julie Smith is our math and French, and that's the position that we've all approved to go from a point four nine full-time. She's the person that's on board for, for us in that position. We have Natalie Donovan, who is our Development, Developmental Learning Center Special Ed Teacher. And we have two new paraprofessionals, Mary Beth Judge and Joyce. And we have our third day back to teachers. It was a great day that we had. Started up high school, had a super panel. So, I mean, we'll talk about that a little bit, but I want to steal the thunder. But, um, it was, it was a great kickoff that we had, starting the super panel. And we came back here this morning and we got our kickoff and we're almost out of here. Done. It went great. Loving the bases and it's kind of exciting to be back. It was a short summer, but it was quite exciting to get back to this place. So, our opening day, we have another day tomorrow. This is staff and the students coming on Wednesday, the first, and that's very twenty-six. Kindergarten, uh, well, we have kindergarten. They have, so kindergarten students will be able to do their screening on Wednesday and Thursday of this week. And then on Friday, they'll be placed with their old teachers. And then on Wednesday, it's seven, at nine o'clock, we have kindergarten, you know, this morning. Students come in, they meet with their teachers. PTO has a little, they have a couple of crafts set up in the purpose room. They take the students on, Brian and I, we'll take the students on a bus ride. It's not too far, but they just kind of experience the bus down towards the golf course. And then go to the other, back to the school. And then we come back and then the story hour, and they have some time in classes. And then your official day is the next day, which will be on the. That's just some of the important dates that we have there. Fifth is Labor Day, sixth, we're in support voting site. And it's that Tuesday, we have staff and service on that day. And seventh is kindergarten. And eighth is Thursday, kindergarten. Right now, we have September eighth as our open house, and we have building on, helping, by period seven. And thirteen is Lifetime, and that's our twenty-nine, we have the opening race. That's the fall three. And we're doing the boost of, I'm sorry. Alright, alright, it's funny. This is, um, we're going to be doing it sometime, so. Set that for, I'm not sure. It's going to be doing the spring, and it's, it's been tough to have it in spring time. That's when all the fundraisers are and sports and things like that. So, we're going to work with boost of, I'm sorry. And all. Just can't go with any of the other fundraisers. Because that's the big one. The last year, it's, it's really. September, yes. Maybe kickoff September fourteenth, the man who, who's the, on, on the one, I think, is on the twenty-third, twenty-fourth. But we'll send one, please.
Thank you, Mr. Bowdring. Looking forward to a great year.
Excited.
Yeah.
Excited. A little bit back home, you guys?
Yeah. Yeah, it was nice walking around and seeing all the desks, you know, in groups and not little stickers where everybody has to sit at lunch. And it's nice.
It will, it's, um, yeah, because in a lot of ways, last year was even more challenging. We showed up at the NAST, and then the NAST was released. And there was, there was still some kind of gray areas that were difficult from any perspective. And for myself, it's kind of, but, so, I decided to kind of not have those.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you. And Celia, if you have anything else that you didn't report before?
I did a couple of things.
Okay.
I want to mention the financial, which is in your, from what, but, yeah.
This is going to be a tough.
I think this might be one of the first times for this early in the year. There were a couple of items to mention. Under technology, we do have an account that does have a deficit already. I hate to say this.
Oh, my goodness.
Um, just small, twelve hundred dollars. But what we did find out is that there are a couple of areas where we did have an increase of a per-person rate for some of the items that the Technology Director does supply for. This is actually for, some of the curriculum-related purchase, programs of the purchase that are related to technology. Technology Director don't find out until later in the year, so we weren't able to update our budget. But we do know within the technology budget, there will be some other savings. For instance, you've heard us talk about the e-rate program that we have. The e-rate is a government grant program that helps subsidize some of our purchases. And we had budgeted a fifty percent reimbursement, or actually getting a sixty percent reimbursement. So, that will be helpful to us. And the way that works is the government directly pays the vendors. It never passes through us, it goes directly to the vendor. So, that's going to work out, so that will free up some funds within the technology budget. So, that should work out okay. And the other area is the deficit is electricity. It's over six thousand dollars. And when I first saw that, I said, we have to just let it, let it be there. Because if that's who we believe right now we're going to be, I want to kind of put the whole budget on alert that we think this is a possibility. So, I'd rather have it out there right now and kind of keep that in the back of our minds as a work of the budget throughout the year. So, if that's reality, I'd rather know about it now, and we can work with those limitations. The town does have a contract with their electric supplier that we, that we are locked into a rate for the electric costs, but not for the distribution costs.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think we all know, did you get your electrical recently? For the, for the summer, how steamy it was, if you had air conditioning going? So, I have an awesome rate for my purchase of electricity, but that distribution is what makes a bad difference. So, we can't control those pieces. So, I just want to kind of put us on a watch to make sure that we're kind of mindful of that there. It could, maybe get worse. So, those are the two that we know of right now. Special education right now is looking okay, but they have not calculated all of the tuitions for the in-district programs. So, we're still looking at that to see where we're going to be. Once we have those capped, then we'll know for sure exactly where we are.
Sorry.
So, that's what we have for right now for those. And then I've been asked to also mention about signing warrants. But Halifax has actually no problem with that. We get our warrant signed very quickly. So, we've just been asked, some of our school committees on this one, who are looking for signing of warrants. So, thank you Halifax, we still are new signing warrants. And also, thank you for whatever you want. It's one of my favorites. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
That's it. All set. Thank you. Any questions, please, later?
It's not a question, but I just wanted you to know that we send our sympathies to you and your family in this difficult time.
Thank you.
Thank you for being so wonderful to all of us, all the time. So.
You're welcome.
We appreciate you. Um, I did have one question about electricity, though.
Sure.
Um, I know we just put some new units in, and I'm assuming we haven't seen any kind of reflection in the utility bill because it's still so brand new with the splits that we were talking about when we were doing the walk-around. We hopefully don't anticipate an enormous jump?
For where the servers are and the.
Like, we put AC in a couple of the rooms.
Right. I can't imagine that's going to be our biggest, like, our budget cluster, but we'll keep an eye on that, though. We'll, we'll be mindful of that.
Okay.
We're always looking to see if there's something else we can do. Our electric rate has been pretty consistent. When Charlie was, Charlie Seating was at the town hall, he had a, he was pretty mindful of that. He was always able to get a pretty decent electric contract. But it's the distribution piece that keeps rising, and we just can't control that piece. We can't, we can't get a contract for that where.
Right, and then no matter how we put in new windows, doors, insulation, the ceiling, right, yeah. Okay.
It's a struggle. So, that's why I want to put it there now, so we keep an eye for it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lynch?
Uh, Dr. Poo's going to talk about, um, district goals, and that will cover curriculum, construction, and assessment, if that's okay.
Good. So, that was your quickest update ever.
Talked a lot to the policy. Lost my airtime.
So, I want to introduce you to Dave Cherkha. He's our new, uh, human resource director. He's been doing a wonderful job. We really appreciate having him. And the things that he's doing to help streamline some of our processes and just, um, really helped at the beginning of the school year, especially. Uh, we noticed, you know, just how, it's not unusual for the start of the school year to have a lot of, um, HR pieces to it. But he really picked up everything and has really helped us in a great deal. And lightened our load quite a bit, so we, we thank him.
Welcome aboard.
Um, the first item is the extension of universal free school meals. Uh, with the signing of the FY twenty-three state budget, Massachusetts will provide state support to extend universal free meals beyond June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. The new state funds will be used to supplement federal USDA reimbursements, allowing the National School Life Program meals to be provided to all students at no charge and to reimburse at this federal free rate during the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The second item, on August sixteenth, I sent out a memo to families with information from Department of Education and the Department of Public Health, begging to issue the joint memo with COVID information for the upcoming school year. The Commonwealth is not recommending universal mask requirements. Surveillance testing of asymptomatic individuals, contact tracing, or testing, stay testing in schools. Districts and schools are reminded that there is no longer any statewide masking mandate in schools other than the school health office, and there is no testing requirement for schools. As always, any individual who wishes to continue to mask, including those who face higher risk for COVID-nineteen, will be supported in that choice. The, uh, recent legis, legis, legislation, Mass General Law, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven P, requires that districts with an assigned School Resource Officer program shall be required to annually file with the Department of Education. And in its final memorandum of understanding and operating procedures are also to be reported to DESI. Um, and the costs of the district in assigning SROs are also submitted to the Department of Education now. So, in the past, in the case of Silver Lake, um, the superintendent often signs the MOAs with the, um, with the local law enforcement. Now, those will be voted and approved in school committee meetings. So, that's something for you to be aware of. Opening day, we focused on, on district-wide goals that are aligned with the Strategy for District Improvement. The goals were created after our summer institute, which included a review of what was completed in twenty-twenty-two and what areas the leadership team needed to be prioritized for the upcoming school year. Schools are going to align their goals as part of our educator evaluation process. Um, and also attached in your folder, which I didn't have opened up. You will find not only a copy of the Strategy for District Improvement that we discussed last year and was updated this year with action steps for this year, but you'll see my goals, it's noted Goals Twenty-Twenty-Two. Our Student Learning Goal is for all of our schools to have at least seventy percent of students achieve meeting or exceeding expectations in MCAS subject by the fall of twenty-twenty-four. Um, I should note that this number was decided upon after examining our MCAS data for twenty-twenty-one. And should we find that we are able to increase, um, that goal, as we would love to see, a one hundred percent meeting or exceeding. Um, but we're looking at a ten to twenty-five percent increase in all three subject areas or depending upon subject areas in each of our schools. So, we thought that this was a challenging, um, but realistic goal. But we will revisit it if in fact we're able to, um, to adjust it based upon the twenty-twenty-two, uh, reporting that we should, we should receive shortly.
Where are we right now? I mean, I know you said ten, fifteen, a hundred percent more, so I'm probably, it just, so.
So, um, let's see. So, I have to open up a different.
Sure.
File. So, I have the aggregate district-wide, so all of our schools, ELA for twenty-twenty-one. So remember, this was during, um, COVID. The ELA was at fifty-nine percent, math was at forty-five percent, and science was at fifty-two percent. So, um, our goal is to be at seventy percent in each of the subject areas.
What was this goal in the first place?
They vary from school to school and I can provide you, if you go to, um, mass DESI profiles.
Sure.
And you go to your school.
Okay.
And you click on district profiles and if you look up Halifax, for example, you choose Halifax Elementary, you click on it. And then you look to, um, accountability. And to the far left of accountability, there's a little arrow that will show you previous year's data.
It'll also be interesting to see twenty twenty.
Yes, it will eventually.
Yeah, but when it comes in, no, I'm excited, like, I'm curious to see.
Right, we're, we're hoping that there, there will be a bump that, that is realized for students having more in-person contact. Last year, we recognized difficulties that some students experienced, but we do anticipate some improvement and should we find that the improvement is greater than we anticipated, then we're gonna raise our, our goal. We wanna make sure that we're, we're pushing more students to, to meet those grade level expectations. Yes.
Two questions if you don't mind. So one is, do you know whether the state changed some of the scores for graduation requirements or there any changes in the elementary level for meeting, you know, to, to score any exceeding expectations? Did the score change at all?
We haven't received that, um, formalized information from the department typically that comes out with a, an information packet with the, the finalized scores. What we have are, um, individualized scores in a drop box, um, without a lot of information, but after schools have had a chance to look at the data and make any corrections. Let's say you know that you had a student that did not sit for the test or did sit for this test, whatever the case may be. Every year, there's a, a window of opportunities for schools to check out the individualized student names and testing scores and to report to DESI if they notice any mistakes. And then we, we then get more official usable data, um, that's in, that we can look at by school, that we can look at by category, that we can parse out different subgroups to see how different groups of students are doing. They can also look at it by question, so if they know that a lot of students performed poorly on a certain type of question, it might be something that the school will do to make sure that we do a better job of aligning the curriculum.
Yes, that's great and that's great work to do, but I just meant, so like the score that students have to achieve now for ELA for high school, I believe, is higher than it used to be?
They raised the cut score.
Yes, did any changes happen at the elementary level?
We're not aware of, at this time of any, but again, I don't know what will come out in that.
Oh, I see, okay, so that'll let it happen after that.
Right.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood, thank you. And then, do you happen to know, so we had fifty-nine percent, forty-five percent, fifty-two percent, do you know how that compares to the state, state average on this? If I'm a good, afterwards, it's fine, I just didn't know if you happened to know.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't have it right here, but again, um, for example, Halifax Elementary was in the classification of not requiring assistance or interventions. They had made substantial progress for targets. They were at the sixty, they had a sixty accountability percentile, so they're performing, uh, better than sixty percent of schools.
Suppose it typically like ten or fifteen percent of points above the state. It'll be interesting to see the numbers this year, because last year, it sounded like the first time two of our grade levels that are seeing that pass, as they didn't take it before. And it was modified, so this year should be a good indicator.
Yeah, that helps too, because we're just, obviously, you know, a lot of the kids were an equal point, you know, point field for that, so that's great, though. It seems to be, from up along the districts.
The next goal focuses on aligning our curriculum. So when we talk about curriculum, we're talking about it pretty loosely. We need an articulated, a plan, pre-K through twelve curriculum that all students should have access to. Those are the statewide expectations. We're using the backwards design approach, what's most important for students to know and be able to do. We've been using EduPlanet to do that. The frameworks themselves have not changed, but having teachers work together to create common units of study with a performance-based assessment at the end of each unit that's authentic, provides choice, relevance, and engages students in higher order thinking. That's something, um, that is not uncommon for elementaries to have programs, but not necessarily an articulated curriculum. So we have a lot of wonderful programs that really serve our students well, but taking, um, we don't necessarily want or need to go cover to cover with a book. Um, and in many cases, it wouldn't be ideal to do so, because you're talking about breadth versus depth. And some of those items in the textbook aren't necessarily what the students, um, either it's most important for students to know and be able to do. And they're not gonna be held accountable for it on a test such as MCAS. And as you know, there's a lot of material in those frameworks. So to have additional material that doesn't need to be covered just because it's in a, in a textbook doesn't make sense either. So that's kind of the, the, some of the, the work that the teachers are doing together. Plus, we take the expertise of the teachers in terms of their pedagogy and their ability to work with the students in front of them to make learning more fun and engaging, not just a plan and a can. Um, so then there's support and structure and that's kind of our catch-all goal to help support student learning. Uh, we did review and updated our SDI. Uh, everything is aligned with the original SDI, we just talked about what steps we would next take. Um, we're going to work with our teachers and our building leaders to, um, review and revise the support team processes at each building to address and track progress on student learning using data. This should inform our pre-referral process for special education. So for example, we should be looking at benchmark data, tests that students take. If students need interventions, how can we help them in the classroom? What additional supports may they, might they need? If interventions aren't working, the support team can get together and create for students what's called a curriculum accommodation plan, which is not a special education, but a general education plan to help students and to monitor them. And then finally, if a student is still struggling despite that, then they might be a good candidate for pre-referral for the special education process. Right, because we know that we've tried certain things, we've looked at the data and then we're moving on. And making sure that our, our, our data teams are, have the support or the training that they need and that they're highly functioning in all of our schools. Mr. Bowdre and Mr. DeSantis do an excellent job with data. They, they really do and, and they help other administrators in our district as well in terms of, uh, what they've done and have also offered to assist, um, with our, with our other schools as well. Um, we have a draft five-year technology plan that was developed by our technology team, which is a, a group of technicians, our technology technicians, but also with educators. So we want our technology plan to be reflective of our educational as well as our infrastructure needs. The next step will be for that plan to go to our administrative leadership team for review and then we'll present it to our school committee as well for their review and feedback. As always, capital and budget planning is an important part of this, making sure that, um, we help to define the needs, um, and help to prioritize, uh, what we consider, um, essential as we have competing needs or sometimes limited budgetary funds. We have our principals looking at new schedules and thinking of ways that they can improve staff collaboration and potential student supports, um, as needed. And again, some of our schools have common planning time for, let's say, teachers to do co-teaching, but other schools are not able to provide that because of scheduling conflicts. A common planning time would allow teachers to get together and write curriculum if you had several members, uh, of a department available at the same time. So thinking about ways that our schedule can help better support this focus on teaching and learning. Uh, we are working on website updates just to make sure, um, that all of the old information is discarded and only new information appears on it. And also thinking about ways that we can freshen up and clean up the look of the website to make it more user-friendly and informational for parents. So we're gonna be working on that. And we're gonna be establishing a working group, um, to review our current evaluation process, uh, currently in our contracts. Um, a working group is part of our contractual obligations. So we would work with members, uh, with teachers and with administrators to look at what's working, what's not, and then making sure it also lives up to the state expectations as to what must be included in the state evaluation system. Uh, but it's been many years since it has been reviewed and we wanna make sure that we're evaluating effectively and efficiently. So those are the three main goals that grew out of our administrative institute over the summer. Today, we had a wonderful welcome back, thanks to students in our communities and thanks to, um, our leadership team to help plan and, um, structure the day. So it started with listening to our students. Uh, we had two Halifax students participate today. And, uh, we, um, had twelve students all together, thirteen with our high school moderator. They did a wonderful job, they were inspirational and they certainly, uh, gave us some valuable insights into what students need and what students appreciate. And I think they really, um, also helped to inspire our teachers with a positive send-off for the school year. Uh, we went, we, um, worked with our teachers to go over what we accomplished last year and what our new, um, focus areas will be for this year, so that they had a sense of how they were developed and why they were developed. Um, particularly with regards to the MCAS scores and, and the debate and discussion that occurred around creating that goal as a leadership team. Because we do not see MCAS as the only measure of a child's success, um, but it is a measure and it is something that all students must pass in order to earn a competency determination. And we believe that by focusing on curriculum alignment and effective instructional practices, all of our educators can help contribute to reaching that goal. So it's not just an English, math and science goal.
We did, after, I think we had six overall students from Halifax.
So not just the two from Halifax Elementary?
I just wanted to point out that.
Do you, do you wanna list, do you wanna, you wanna list your Halifax students?
We did, we had, so we had, um, two students, we had a second grade student, Sadie Sessa, and then we had a fifth grade student, Hannah Seeley. And then we had Brandon Nesta, who was from the middle school. And then we had Sarah Thomas and Dylan Soney, the high school. And then the MC was, you know, Hannah Seeley.
Well, Halifax represented this district well, they did, they did a great job, so a lot to be proud of today.
Yeah, I was excited. Just kind of see the whole thing.
Any questions and?
I have one, but you answered it at the beginning of your. I, I'm just, I'm glad to see the district, I'm not a big, um, test person, I don't like the whole teaching to the test thing. I understand that that's the way that the, the state is structured. Um, but I, I value the fact that you make a point of saying that that's not how we measure our, the success of our students as a district. Um, I think that I like your aggressive academic goal, I do. And, uh, I'm pleased to hear that a lot of the professional development moving forward is going to be to strengthen the academic foundation of our children, because I think as parents, anyone who's had kids in these last couple of years has watched them struggle academically or even fall behind, just to no fault of our own. And so I'm just, I'm glad that that's the focus of the district moving forward. So thank you for that update. Any other comments for Dr. Poo before we?
I just wanna just restate that the MCAS scores, I know we certainly agree with you, but it's not the only gauge that we have for how kids are doing, but we're doing great in MCAS. So even though I know you have concerns over the last couple of years, it seems like we're still in a really good place.
Yeah.
Doing well compared to the actual state, so who knows for that?
Yeah. That's a reflection on our district and our staff, so it's a positive thing. And I imagine there's an adjustment, not only with what's happened in the world, but moving to technology-based MCAS is, is an adjustment for students also. So getting all of that into consideration, I think we're doing all right. So it's good. Anyone else? Hopefully we close our meeting and adjourn for executive session. All right, before we do that, I'm just gonna throw out some dates to remember, just to reiterate. So the first day of school is Wednesday, August thirty-first, um, for grades one through six. Uh, September fifth is, is Labor Day, so there's no school that day. And then September sixth is, uh, we have voting here in our elementary school gym, so it's an in-service day for our teachers. September seventh, as Mr. Bowdre mentioned, is our kindergarten open house and, uh, the kindergarteners go back to school on the eighth, which is Thursday, next Thursday. Um, September twenty-ninth is an early release for our students to twelve-thirty, um, and they get lunch, right? That was part of the whole conversation that we had earlier about lunch, okay.
Yeah, lunch on, on that day.
Lunch will be served, yes. And so in previous years, um, sometimes lunch was not served, but moving forward, that won't be the case always. And, uh, on October third is our next Halifax school committee meeting, so.
I'm sorry, but so September twenty-ninth isn't an AGS halftime, correct? So it's early release for the seventh to twelve?
Um, right, but that was just, I think, a misprint on our agenda, but it is an early release at twelve-thirty.
Yes.
For AGS, yeah.
And then do we have a date for the open house for, you, you had listed two here, no?
I know, I was going with, I was hoping it was gonna work and then the high school has theirs on the fifteenth and then the twenty-sixth is too late for us. So we're going right now to plan for the eighth, just kind of the same time we got planned it last year.
So September eighth?
Five thirty, seven.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and if somebody could read why we are breaking into make, into executive session to make, I'm sorry?
Yeah, one thing before that, before we break, if I could, I just wanted to recognize and thank Selectman Jonathan Seeley for being here tonight. I know he's the liaison, uh, for the school committee and I think we're all aware of what's going on across the street at Town Hall and, uh, crisis, I recall, the crisis that we're in right now. I can't imagine what he's going through as the lone selectman, so I just wanted to thank you for being here, uh, tonight, Mr. Seeley. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so yes, we need a motion to break into executive session for the listed reasons, only to return to regular session for the purpose of adjournment.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to move to executive session and GLC thirty A, section twenty-one A, three, to discuss the strategy in respect to collective bargaining for contract negotiations. And A four, to discuss appointment of security personnel or devices for strategies in respect thereto. Executive session, person one two, MGLC thirty A, S twenty-one A seven, to comply with the back of the directory of any general or special law applicable to executive session, and it's May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, and July first, twenty twenty-two. Only to return back to the meeting. Okay.
I need a second.
Sure.
Okay, all those in favor, move the roll, Paul Jess. Laura?
Yep.
Karen?
Yep.
Fine. That's it.